The April 13th meeting of the town council? Hello? Okay, I'll get closer. First item on our agenda is roll call. All councilors are present. Mr. Perry is back from the sun and brought it with him, so we're very thankful for that.
Thank you, Tom.
Second item is agenda review. I don't believe we have any changes. So, third item is approval of minutes of March 9, March 16, and March 30, 2015. I will take a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Any changes? All right, hearing none. Take a vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes? Passes unanimously. We'll move on to public hearings. Public hearing A.
You're going to have to elect yourself?
I'm sorry, election of a chair.
She tried to skip right over that, didn't she?
Tried to skip right over that. All right, we will move to election of council chairperson.
I nominate Cindy to have a second round of being the chair.
Second.
You guys don't jump so much.
We're in stereo today.
Thank you. Any other nominations? All right, I would accept the nomination. So, I guess I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of me serving another year? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
All right, now we'll move on to public hearings. Public hearing A, to consider a Class 11 Restaurant Lounge Malt, Spirits, and Vines Liquor License, Special Amusement Permit for Music, Dancing, and Entertainment, and Vitular's License for Woodman's LLC Doing Business as Woodman's Bar and Grill, 31 Main Street.
Good evening. Bill Murphy, code officer. Yes, all the inspections have been performed and the state licenses are current and now posted in the building, and staff recommends approval.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against? Go ahead, Susan.
I am like the broken record player about this one, though. I will keep stating what I have to say pertaining to the experience of being harassed at that establishment and being expected to tolerate being harassed. Just as a female that likes to go out and about and meet people, maybe a single female out and about, but I shouldn't be expected to tolerate harassment, which was expected of me at that establishment.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Anyone else?
Abe.
Hi, I'm Abe, and I'm owner of Woodman's, and here just to answer any questions.
The amusements, are those new, or are you?
No, same as usual. We do, on Wednesday, we have a Bluegrass Jam. On Friday, frequently during the school year, we have bands, so.
Do you still do the trivia night?
Yep, yep, that's tonight. Thank you. Kept me warm this winter.
Thanks, Abe. Hearing no one else for or against, I will close public hearing A. Move on to order 15-43. Order approving a Class 11 Restaurant Lounge Malt, Spirits, and Vines Liquor License for Woodman's LLC Doing Business as Woodman's Bar and Grill, 31 Main Street. Can I have a motion, please?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none. Take a vote. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1544. Order approving a special amusement permit for music, dancing, and entertainment for Woodman's LLC Doing Business as Woodman's Bar and Grill, 31 Main Street. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1545. Order approving a vitular's license for Woodman's LLC Doing Business as Woodman's Bar and Grill, 31 Main Street. Motion, please.
Move rule.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing B. A Lunchwagon License to Cutler LLC Doing Business as Granny's Grilled Cheese Truck, 6 Mill Street.
Okay. I didn't know if Sophie was gonna... Okay. I have not yet been able to make an inspection of the lunchwagon that's going to be used. It's still under construction, and it will be delivered, Bob said, within two weeks, and at which time we'll do the inspection. And we staff recommends a conditional license approval pending the satisfactory inspection by me and proof that the state licenses have an issue.
Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this license?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Bob Cutler, owner of Family Dog Cutler LLC. Sorry for my dress. I literally just came right from the deck tonight, running a little bit late. But I just want to talk real quickly about the two trucks. The one you're talking about now is the Grammy's Grilled Cheese Truck, and the second one is, the next item on the agenda, I believe, is called the Stray Dog. Two trucks will work out of the commissary kitchen, which is currently the family dog. No operations will change out of the dog itself. Two trucks, 90% of the time, the trucks will be in the Bangor, city of Bangor, operating at the waterfront concerts and Kmart parking lot and working with the National Guard for a place down there. The exception will be of during the school year, during good weather, which is like five weeks. Will be dinner service, 5 to 8 o'clock at night, currently at the Grove, which we have permission from to operate on the Grove private property. And I believe that letter is in the packet that was distributed. We've had some other people ask us to do different things with them in town. I currently have said no to everything. It's one of the few things I'm trying to go slowly on, which isn't in my nature to go slowly on things, but this is one thing that we're trying to go slowly on. The truck's Grammy's is very close to being ready. Stray Dog is trailing behind by about two and a half weeks. Bad paw, I don't know what's wrong with it. It's just every delay that could happen with that truck is happening. But Grammy's is strong, so she should be ready in about 10 days, two weeks, and then about 10 days, two weeks after that, the Stray Dog will be ready. And I can just bring it right over to the lot, and you guys can take a look at it whenever, have all the licensing. So, it's nice to have a mobile kitchen, you can just do that. But it's no ventilation, no fire suppression. Ventilation being a hood, there's a window. It's a very, there's no propane, there's no, it's all electric. It's a super easy concept that we think that would be greatly enjoyed.
What are you going to serve?
Grammy's Grilled Cheese's and Melt is Grilled Cheese's and Melt. The, for the past, I launched this idea in February. I'm looking at you, Abe, because you were at the event. I think it was February, or January. January, February, we launched it in collaboration with Green Drinks. And since then, every week, we've been doing a different special that's off the trucks. So, this week, it's two Chicago dogs. Last week was a, what was last week? It was a Chicken Alfredo bomb. So, it's every different week, it's a different item off the truck, and we'll be using it to train our kitchen and train our employees and train our customers on what to expect on the trucks. So, the, and the Stray Dog is very similar to our menu with a few items that stray off it, like the Chicken Alfredo Bomb or a awesome Portobello Melt that we're doing and things like that. It's still keeping, making sure we have gluten-free options, as well as gluten options, and, you know, vegan and so forth. And, of course, a lot of bacon, so.
Thank you very much, Bob. Anyone else wish to speak for or against the license? All right, hearing none. I'll close public hearing B. Move on to order 1546. Order approving a Lunchwagon License to Cutler LLC Doing Business as Grammy's Grilled Cheese Truck, 6 Mill Street. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And this, will this be conditional approval? Motion for conditional?
Pending approval.
I thought the order didn't read conditional. No, I move that we, give them the license on a conditional basis pending the code enforcement officer's review of the vehicle.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So, what's our oversight on this? I, I'm not really recalling too much in the way of...
Yeah, we actually have very limited oversight. This is not the same as a different kind of establishment. State has oversight here. We sell, we provide just the license to make sure it meets with code and that they have permission to be where they park.
Thanks.
Can I?
Yeah.
Just, sometimes I don't hear everything, but did you say it was conditioned upon inspection by the code officer and approval from the state?
No, I didn't put in approval by the state, but yes. If it, the state is the one who really monitors these things, right? So, yeah.
Okay. So, I will take that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Could I have a second on the friendly amendment?
I second that again, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, all those in favor of issuing this license? Passes unanimously. Okay, public hearing C. A Lunchwagon License to Cutler LLC Doing Business as the Stray Dog, 6 Mill Street.
Yes, as we did the last one. Staff recommends a conditional approval pending my inspection and approvals from the state.
Anyone wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license? All right, I will close public hearing C and move on to order 1547. Excuse me. Order approving a Lunchwagon License to Cutler LLC Doing Business as the Stray Dog, 6 Mill Street. I will take a motion.
So moved.
With conditional?
With conditions as previous.
All right.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of order 1547? Passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing D. To consider a vitular's license for...
Can I?
Yep.
Sorry. So, in Bangor, because we don't operate a brick and mortar family dog, and the Stray Dog and Grammy's do not pay property tax, so we do a give back of percentage of revenue to two of sponsored charities by the budget out of the city of Bangor. One is Arts Collaborative and one is the First Heat Program. And the idea is, because we don't pay taxes, we're giving back and net giving versus just taking dollars from brick and mortars that are paying property tax. In Orno, we pay property tax at the brick and mortar. However, I do recognize that I added two revenue streams without paying anything other than a minimal fee for a lunchwagon. So, I didn't want to say it during the thing, because I didn't want it to sound like quid pro quo, but what the Grove and I are going to do is, a percentage of every dollar we bring in, we're going to write back quarterly checks to the Orno Heating Fund. Hopefully, it's a considerable amount. If it's not, it's more than I gave last year to the Orno Heating Fund. And to my knowledge, I don't know if the Grove gives anything to the Orno Heating Fund or anything else. So, it's a nice way for the Grove to be better involved in the municipality. Plus, it continues my belief that, you know, businesses need to continue to give more than just their taxes. So, I just wanted to say that on the record, that we're, the Grove and I have made that agreement out of, you know, a small percentage of every revenue dollar, nonprofit dollar, is given back to the Orno Heating Fund. That's generated in Orno. You don't get what's generated in Bangor. You get what's just generated here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bob. That's great. All right, we'll move on to public hearing D. To consider a vitular's license for Susan Whitmore Doing Business as SDW, 27 Park Street.
Yes, all inspections have been performed. Her state license is current, and staff recommends approval.
All right. Anyone wish to speak for or against this license? I'm just curious what it is.
I'm sorry? Better to ask her.
Well, prior to this, I had an online business selling various items that I make, mostly knitted items and some jewelry. And I decided to, last year, I decided to expand with the option of selling baked goods as well, considering I cook, I pretty much cook all of my food myself from scratch. And so, I'm kind of like, maybe I should expand my business to include, you know, things like cookies and whatnot. So, it's pretty much that. And I think, really didn't have many sales with last year. I think this year I might expand more in terms of promote myself more. The way my business is set up, I can't have customers coming to my property, so most of my business is conducted online. So, it would be a matter of someone saying, "Hey, Sue, I need a dozen cookies."
Great.
Type of things. And I also keep very low sugar, low fat intake. I substitute those ingredients to make it healthier, more substantial nutritiously food.
Great. Thank you very much, Susan. Anyone else wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license? Hearing no. I will close public hearing D and move on to order 1548. Order approving a vitular's license for Susan Whitmore Doing Business as SDW, 27 Park Street. Can I have a motion, please?
Excuse me, move approval.
Any discussion?
This is a home occupation, I assume? And Susan's gotten the necessary home occupation permits and all that?
She has a home occupation permit from the planning board, and it's been renewed every year. But this is for the sale of baked goods.
No, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that she had a home occupation permit if she's doing the business at 27 Park, so, okay, good.
Anyone else? None, I'll take a vote on order 1548. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing E. An amended contract zone request by Rose Property LLC and Fariba Dahim and Sharom Promataz to allow additional uses for a single-family home located at 89 through 93 Main Street, tax map 27-2, lot 13, in the contracted village commercial zone.
Yes, Evan Rickett, Tom Planner. This is the next, I think, next, the final step in amending the contract zone that covers the property at 89 to 93 Main Street, the former St. Mary Church property. As you know, the town enacted a contract zone a few years ago for that property. In that zone language, one of the buildings, the former rectory building, it was assumed that it would always be used as a single-family home, because that's the way it was being used. The decision was made by the owners to move from that home into one of the other units that's been refurbished on site, and they now would like some leeway in the use of that building. And the reuse of that building is fairly large. And so, the amended zone, as has been discussed with council and council committee, would allow it to be used as a two-family home for some low-impact commercial-type uses. And potentially, if this were the desire of the RSU system, as a special kind of rooming house for students under the supervision of the RSU, this would be for international students who are looking for a place to live. This matter has been heard by the planning board, upon your reference, as required, and the planning board on March 18th heard this. On March 19th issued a report to you indicating their unanimous approval, endorsement of the project recommendation to approve, noting that the parking lot that had been required to be built on the original contract zone has been built. It's in, it's a very good lot with 40 spaces. Unlikely that the various uses would all coincide, the peaks would coincide at the same time, there's public parking available, and that they believe that had this proposal been part of their original request, they would have recommended approval at that time as well.
Thank you, Evan. Does anyone wish to speak for or against?
I should just mention, procedurally, this is a public hearing. You'll take no action tonight. It'll be, your next meeting that you actually take action.
Okay. No one wishes to speak regarding this? All right, I will close public hearing E. So, councilors, we take it up next month as an order, so we'll save our conversation about it till then. So, moving on to item number six, acknowledgements by council members. Start with Judy. All right. Tom?
Well, after the last couple of days, I think winter is gone, but I don't trust that. But I don't really believe that. Anyway, we've had, since the last time we had this meeting, we've had a number of quote-unquote "smaller" snowstorms, and I wish to appreciate you guys for taking care of those. And I hope the rest of winter has passed us, but we'll find out.
I don't have anything in particular this evening.
Tom Perry?
I'd just like to acknowledge the passing of two Orno residents during the last month. George Gonya, a lifetime resident of Orno, who served many years in the Orno Town Council and chaired the council and made many contributions to the town, passed away last month. And Gloria Gray, another lifetime resident of Orno, passed away within the last week.
Mark?
I would like to acknowledge all the hard work that's being done by staff and town manager on the budget right now. And in doing so, I would encourage people to attend the meetings and listen to the discussions about the budget as it unfolds. So, it's coming up and it's happening now.
Great, Sam?
Two quick things. I'd like to congratulate, extend my congratulations to Orno Middle School Show Choir publicly. I think they did amazing work. They won the state championship. And I'm married to the director. That's not why I'm congratulating you. Full disclosure. And also, just a quick acknowledgement that one of the hubs of our community is undergoing great improvement. The Store Ampersand is beautiful right now, and I'd just like to sort of tip my hat to them for some great work they're doing, so. And also, I'm also glad the snow's gone, as is Mr. Spitz.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. I will take a motion to move the consent agenda.
So moved.
Cindy, can we mention a couple of things in particular?
Yeah, I was going to after I, if I could just get a second.
Second.
All right. I'd like to note on the consent agenda that there is order 1549. Order authorizing the town manager to withdraw from the Coalition of Defendant Interveners in the Penobscot Nation versus State of Maine. Order 1541, an order setting May 11, 2015, at 7:00 PM is the date for the public hearing to discuss the 2015-2016 capital budget. An order appointing George Markowski to the Orno Town, Orno, old, excuse me, Old Town Orno Fiber Corporation Board of Trustees. And the order appointing Mark Kittredge to the planning board, Gary Nois to the Board of Appeals, Allison Appleby to the Library Board of Trustees, Erin Luttein to the Library Youth Member, Jack Bleese and Matthew Ewing to the Tree Board, and Gail White, Dave Thompson, Glenn Kayler, Cassandra Babbitt, and Jeffrey Bowle to the Trails Committee. These people are all being reappointed. If there is, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Could we just be updated? I know Sophie has some additional information on the withdrawal from the Coalition of Defendants as an intervenor, so could you just update the public on that?
The motion has been filed to withdraw.
Yeah, it's still pending.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving, thank you. Moving on to new business. Order 15-62. Order appointing all council members to the standing council committees and appointing chairpersons to be nominated. Okay, so we're, I will need an amendment, but I first would like to just make sure that Sam Coons would be chair of the operations committee, Tom Perry would be chair of the finance committee, and Jeff Gordon would be chair of the community development committee. I'm suggesting that they might want to do that.
Fine.
Second.
So, I am, I am going to amend the order now? Okay, okay, so I'm going to amend the order, appointing all council members to the standing council committees and appointing chairperson Sam Coons to operations, Tom Perry to finance, and Jeff Gordon to community development. Could I have a motion on the amended order?
I approve, or I move that we approve the amendment to the order.
All right. I have a second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of order 1562 as amended? Passes unanimously, even though a little hesitant down the corner. I saw that. I waited, I waited. Order 1563. Order awarding a bid for a tandem axle-wheeler truck chassis to O'Connor Motor Company of Augusta, Maine, for $69,000 to be drawn from the equipment reserve. Price includes trade value for the 2002 International Plow Truck of $33,286. Motion, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Hi, Rob Yerx, Public Works Director. On March 27th, we received three bids for a tandem axle, heavy-duty truck chassis, as well as the associated, in a separate bid, the associated body, spreader, plow, wing, all the equipment that goes along with it. The low bid for the truck, which includes $33,296 trade value for the truck that we'll be replacing, was $69,000. When you add in, which is the next order that you're coming up to, the low bid for the equipment proposal, total expenditures will be $146,568, which is a little under $500 less than what we had budgeted for. The truck chassis will be a 2016 Western Star, 4700 SB, that meets all the specifications that we set out in the bid. From O'Connor Motor Company of Augusta.
Anyone, questions? Thomas?
So, Rob, so this made sense to me about a month ago. And then we had a workshop within the last week in which there was the discussion of changing plow routes, et cetera. So, could you just, right, because this was before that discussion, so in the context of that discussion, could you just tell me how this fits in?
Well, I think even if we reduce the fleet size for some periods of time, we're still going to need to replace the truck that we're going to replace. So, the purchase still makes sense, even if we're going to reduce our fleet response. The truck that probably would be eliminated is a smaller truck that we use. It's still a heavy-duty truck, but it's a single-axle truck. So, this two-axle truck, which can carry more sand and salt at one time and cover more ground, would still be a necessary purchase, even if we make changes to the level of service.
Can I just add that the discussion that we had at this point was moving to a shift operation during long storms? So, unless council gives us other direction, the plan would be to try to maintain the current level of service except for lengthy storms.
I'd still, I mean, there are implications as we're talking about changing surface loads, so that, just, and Rob really explained it very well.
And the 2002, how many miles would that have on it?
It's got about 80,000 miles on it. But for a plow truck, 15 miles an hour pushing a plow around town is, that's quite a few miles for something of that, for that kind of. And at 2002, things are starting to, the body's starting to rust to the point where we're gonna, it's getting to that tipping point where we're going to have to start investing in repairs for it or replacing it, and those repairs aren't cheap. in repairs for it or replacing it, and those repairs aren't cheap. A lift cylinder that it needs is about a $5,000 investment, so there's some pretty significant repairs that it would need if we weren't going to try to continue to use it.
I think it's pretty impressive that we get that many years out of a truck that gets used as, as hard as those plow trucks do.
Any other discussion? All right, I will take a vote on Order 1563. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to Order 1564, order awarding the bid for a 12 cubic yard dump and material spreader, body and plow and wing and associated equipment and controls to Viking Sives...
Sives.
Sives of Maine, Lewiston, Maine, for $77,578 to be drawn from the equipment reserve. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
So, concurrently with the chassis bid, which is just the truck part, we took, also took bids for a vendor to provide all the equipment that we would use with the truck, which is the body, the spreader, the material spreader, the controls and ground speed controls for the spreading, the plow, the wing, safety lights, all that stuff comes once you get the truck back from the factory. So Viking Sives of Maine would be the one that would actually outfit the truck once we actually got, took delivery on the chassis, which should be in about 12 to 14 weeks.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote on Order 1564. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Moving on to Order 1565, order authorizing the balance of the Nancy Knoll Wood Charitable Remender Unit Trust, approximately $4,300, to be paid to the City of Old Town to assist the Old Town Public Library in a collaborative digitization collection project. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Hi, Lori Carpenter, Library Director. Last March, we received funds from the Nancy Knoll Wood Charitable Trust, a little over $14,000, and we used close to 10 of that for a self-check system that was installed in November and has been used. We're getting about 11% of our circulation from that, but the anecdotal remarks from people are overwhelming, that they really like being able to come in and use a very simple system. So, we now have a little over $4,000 left. I was approached by Cindy Jennings in Old Town. They've been working on digitizing the Penobscot Times beginning in 1884 up until present, and they've spent about $13,000 on it. We have access to that through our website. It's stored on the server for advantage preservation in Iowa, but they also sent Old Town a hard drive with, so they have a hard copy of everything. So, I just feel that it's, it would be a good, a good neighbor to help out with that. We have access to that, and it certainly has information that is pertinent to Orano as well as Old Town.
Thank you. Go ahead. Questions, comments?
They're gonna archive these going forward also, right?
Yes, they are.
That's part of the arrangement, yeah.
Yes, and we'll see what our budget can do. I think it will be less expensive going forward. The first part wasn't as expensive because it was all on microfiche, 1884 through, what was the date?
1984.
Oh, thank you, 1984. Then, from 1985 on, they had everything bound, so all the papers bound, so they actually had to be taken apart in order to scan them. So, I believe that Cindy is actually sending on the, off the actual papers as they come in to get digitized, so they won't have to take them out. So, it'll be cheaper. We'll see if we can help too. They're, they're pretty committed to the project, but as it helps our citizens, I think it's a wise thing to try and help, help out with.
Will they, will they get them digitally from the publisher?
They do.
Going forward, they'll get them digitally, so there won't be any scanning, right?
Well, it'll be a digital scan. Does that make sense? Or just, okay, well, I guess, maybe from Penobscot Times.
I mean, the Penobscot Times, I'm sure they have it in a digital format for printing, and you can just archive the digital format.
Okay, so I, I think she's working on that with, with the editor at this point. I'm not sure if they're going to hand that over for free.
Yeah, okay.
But this is just to help out with the...
That's already, something that's already been done.
I think very great, generous, I think that's great.
Great to see you collaborating with the...
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. I will take a vote on Order 1565. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. All right. Order 1566, order authorizing the town manager to execute a quick claim with covenant deed from Penobscot River Restoration Trust for the Union Street boat launch property. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Sophie?
As we discussed in council committee, this is part of the Penobscot River Restoration Project, and it's nearing its full completion, so the trust is ready to turn the boat launch over to the town. We have had conversations with the trust's attorney and the executive director from the trust, and what you see in the deed is the sum total of what they expect from us, so the council will have it, permission moving forward to make decisions regarding the boat launch. And we will be able to move that into our regular maintenance plan for the, for all of our parks.
Anyone have any comments, questions, concerns?
Sophie, do we have any liability in terms of the water and...
So, what we have for liability is if we allowed, we have to inspect it on a regular basis. If we allowed a dangerous situation to happen out there, not taking appropriate care of, you know, like a big pothole or something like that, we would have some responsibility. Once it belongs to us, we will sign it as no swimming, use at your own risk, but as long as we're not charging people for it and we're not negligent, we have immunity.
And this is mostly for you and kayak launching?
It's, it's set up for boat launching. The, yeah, it's, it's, it's beautiful out there. If you haven't seen it, I would encourage councilors to go out and take a look at it, especially with the sunshine. But it, it is set up for a regular launch of boats. We're just watching the water level.
Have we gotten an estimate on the maintenance costs for the year? Any idea? I mean, it's, there's not that much to do. Are we gonna plow snow on it, Rob?
No.
No, okay. So, we got some additional mowing to do?
We're gonna mow. It will add to the mowing crew. As I have expressed to council on numerous occasions, we are stretching that thin, and when we stretch it thin, it just means it's longer to get back around to things. Eventually, if we keep taking on parks, we're gonna have to think about how we maintain them, but for right now, it's...
Still doable.
It's doable. It's not gonna get anything fancy. It will get part of the weekly process.
Is there a picnic table there? There is now, isn't there?
Yes.
Is it a concrete one or is it a wooden one?
It is, it is a wooden one.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? All right, I will take a vote. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to Order 1567, order authorizing the town manager to execute an amended and restated interlocal agreement among the City of Old Town, the Town of Orano, and the University of Maine System regarding the establishment and operation of a municipal fiber corporation. I will take a motion, please.
Remember, something about that. So moved. Second.
All right. So, this would be Bell's project, but Bell is currently taping this meeting. Evan, do you wanna? I thought I saw her.
Did you lock her up?
Yeah, she's in the little room in the corner.
Evan Rickert, town planner, and faithful assistant to Bell Ryder. A year ago, in May, the council, or Sophie executed upon authorization from the council an interlocal agreement with Old Town to create the Old Town Orano Fiber Corporation, whose purpose is to build out the last, so-called last mile fiber, dark fiber, that would be made available once in place for lease to internet service providers and institutions. At the time, we've been, well, we've been going after funding for this. We actually thought we had some great success until, until we didn't with one of the state agencies, state of Maine agencies. But in any case, we continue to move forward, continue to be optimistic that things are going to come together. Councilor Gordon has been, you know, a real stalwart in, in pursuing this. In any case, we've always been working with the University of Maine System, Network Maine, the IT arm of University of Maine. They're always gonna be advisors, always gonna be contributing in kind resources to us. On reflection, they believe that, and we believe that they should be actual members of the corporation. So, the purpose of this amendment is to include them as a trio instead of a duo of members. And once both Old Town and we and the University of Maine System sign this, there will be an organizing meeting, and, and I believe you've already made one appointment tonight of Mr. Markowski from Orano per the, per the interlocal agreement. So, this is adding UMaine System, not Orano, but UMaine System as a signatory.
If I could just follow up, previously, council had, had appointed Jeff Gordon as council representative, and in the interlocal agreement, it names me or my designee, and I have designated Bell Ryder, the assistant city, town manager.
Any other questions or comments?
There's a conversation here on pages, our page 57, page four of the amendment. It talks about organizational costs and preparations. Any idea how much that's gonna be, Jeff?
For incorporation?
Yeah, well...
$175.
I don't know, incorporation is a couple hundred dollars or something, and maybe at the outside, but I mean...
It's, it's a $175 filing fee, I think.
Yeah, something like that. I mean, there's lots of other costs, so that's the least of your worries if you're taking up a cost.
Well, no, what I'm, I'm just concerned with Section 6, it talks about the organizational costs and preparations.
Um, page 57.
We're gonna share the cost equally. Page 57, or page four?
Yes, I think I can help with that. We've borne most of those costs at this point. The costs have been incurred and paid.
They've been legal.
They've only been legal. We've, we've had an attorney help us prepare the, the necessary documents to do some research for us about the University of Maine participation. It's not been high costs. I mean, I think the costs have been maybe $1,000 or $2,000, about $2,000 in legal costs, and so it's not been burdensome, and I think we're pretty much done with those costs.
I, I would just remind all, everybody on council that there's not that much detail in this interlocal agreement about what's gonna happen in, in a business framework in the, in the OTO Fiber Corporation. That's gonna be decided, those details will be decided by the board as we get together and organize ourselves, and we'll be drafting bylaws. It'll lay out in much greater detail exactly what, how the board is gonna function and ownership of the capital assets and all that sort of thing will all be laid out there when the board starts meeting. So, if there are issues that anybody, any of the councilors are concerned about, that they want to see in those bylaws, issues you want to see addressed in the bylaws, be sure you communicate those to the three appointees to the board. That's myself, Bell, or George Markowski. Each of the three entities have three voting members on the board, and so if you have concerns or things you want to see addressed in the bylaws, make sure you get that information to us.
So, Jeff, will those bylaws go by council before, or...
They can, I mean, if you want to see them, I don't...
Because it's, I'm gonna have...
The council, the council wouldn't have any direct vote.
No, but, but you're asking for, you're saying, if you have concerns, you want to put input, tell me, and it's a lot easier to know what it looks like and then say, ooh, I think he might not have addressed.
Right.
Compared to starting to make stuff up that's not relevant to what you're doing.
Right.
So, I, I'd appreciate anyway, as it's, as you're going through the process, which I'm gonna guess is gonna take some time, just let us see it at a meeting at some point.
Yeah. Well, one other thing I have in my notes here in the margin is, one thing I think the council, or our, our pointees to the board should insist on is some kind of regular reporting back to the councils, the two councils, two town councils, and I don't know where the report would go on the university on the chancellor's side, but probably up to the chancellor's office. Regular reporting on what the board is doing and, and how we're organizing ourselves. And give, and give chance for some kind of input before it gets finalized, too. That'll be my preferences, so. Should be an open process, I think.
Okay. That's a good project for operations.
Exactly what you're doing.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? All right. I will take a vote on Order 1567. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to Order 1568, order adopting amendments to the Town of Orano ordinances, Chapter 13, Article 2, Noise Control, Section 13-51 through 13-59. Could I have a motion, please?
Move approval. Excuse me, move approval?
Second.
Right, okay, and I'm sorry I have to amend that order. I need an amendment to the order to basically ask to repeal order, I lost it, 1351 through 1359, and repeal and replace.
Yes.
Okay. So, let me start that over again. I need an amendment to the Order 1568, which would allow to repeal the existing Section 1351 through 1359 and replace with a new Section 1351 through 1359A. So, could I have a motion for the amendment, please? Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if I can make a motion to an amendment that I've already made the most of.
Oh, okay.
But maybe I can, so I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All right. I think now we can move on to Evan.
Yes, thank you, Evan Rickert. You heard, you conducted a public hearing on this last fall, but we delayed, you delayed at our request, final action on it because we knew that this is a technical ordinance that would require some new meters, new technology, and we had some additional language in here to address some things that are, aren't addressed in the existing ordinance, and we wanted a chance to go through a training session with the police department, in particular in code enforcement, so that if during that training session, something turned up that seemed either missing or illogical or not enforceable, we would have time to change the proposal before you finally acted on it. We did order the meters, we have them in place, they are pretty nice technology, and we did hold a training session with the police department and code enforcement, and out of that, not, there were a couple minor changes that came out of that, so I'm glad we waited. One was just to underscore, it was already implied, but the police department asked if we would make it explicit that, a test of reasonableness in the use of their judgment under, in certain situations, which is the test that's always used by them, and that was already implied, but we made it more explicit. There were also a couple of small things that they asked about that may also have been implied but not explicit, we made it explicit. So, there's exemption in here for farm equipment. So, there's exemption in here for farm equipment and farming activities. It was assumed that that would also extend to logging activities, and we made that explicit. And there was exemptions under certain conditions for power equipment during certain hours of the day and so forth, and the question arose as, what about generators? And so, we, you know, usually the power equipment, we're thinking about lawn mowers and snowblowers and things like that, but generators in the case of loss of power and with, so we've included some, a couple sentences about that, including times of testing those generators and limits on the amount of, number of times you can do it in a given period of time. So, standards up. Anyway, so there are a few technical amendments. Let me just run through quickly, so to refresh your memory, this won't take much time, or take as much time as you want, but it won't take me much time. The ordinance, we have an ordinance that's been in place for at least twenty years, had never been updated with respect to the zoning districts, and that was the impetus for, for opening this up and making changes. In the process, we saw some technical issues, we saw inconsistencies between our ordinance and the standards adopted by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, and we also saw some things that were probably unenforceable or difficult to enforce because certain things that were assumed to be measurable weren't measurable. So, we dug deeper into it and made a more substantial change than simply updating the zoning districts. But all the zoning districts are now in and updated, and you'll see this, you'll, you'll see this in section thirteen fifty-three A, the chart on it. It's not an awful lot different than what you'd expect. We made a few changes based on your recommendations and council committee. So, there are now standards, for example, for the gateway medium residential density district, the low density residential district, the commercial two district, which was an old, it had an old name attached to it, and basically the, the sound levels are fairly uniform townwide, except in the medium density residential district, which has a slightly more stringent standard, consistent with the way the original ordinance had been written. In any, in all cases, we are roughly consistent, maybe a little stricter in the case of the MDR district than what the DEP standard is for residential areas. One of the important technical changes, as you'll recall, is we went to an hourly averaging rather than a point in time, which turns out not to be all that enforceable in the courts because noise fluctuates by the second, by the minute, getting an hourly average, and one of the reasons we had to get new meters is that these new meters are integrating meters that can, that can integrate the measurements from any period of time, including hourly at whatever, whatever intervals it's set. Secondly, updated standards for construction, sound, this is equal, equivalent to, it's the same as DEP standards. Our ordinance had been silent on that, and so the assumption was that it would be the normal standards, which would be simply not realistic. Small technical, important technical thing, I'm not sure we're going to ever run into it, but we had made some provision for short duration and tonal sound, short duration, you know, is that pound, 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 and, or tonal sound like high squealy, broken fan belt sound. I won't try to imitate it as I did at the training session.
Thank you.
But you've got to be able to measure those, and, but there's, they have more annoyance to them, and so DEP adds kind of a penalty for that kind of sound. We've adopted that in these standards, but the measurement of that sound is not trivial, and would probably have to be done by an outside, it wouldn't be done with our meters. To do that would, would have cost, would have doubled the cost of the meters that we purchased. It continues to assume that public nuisance noise, there's a whole section in the ordinance on public nuisance noise, this is the yelling, the shouting, the loud music and all that Those are simply continued, assumed to be in violation of the ordinance. You, hard to go out and measure that with a meter. It's not like an industrial piece of machinery. And, and so that's continued. Importantly, the former ordinance, their current ordinance, assumed that you could go into an apartment house with a meter and measure the noise that might be emanating from one apartment unit and bothering another apartment unit. Well, that's extremely tricky, if not impossible, because of the echo effect, the reverberations, and the, you can't get accurate reading. So, we have switched that over into the public nuisance category, which is probably the way it is handled anyways as a practical matter. Continue to provide for the same exemptions, plus the ones I just mentioned on logging and, and clarifications on power equipment. Continue to make the police department the enforcement agency. I'm not sure they're entirely thrilled about that, but they understand that they're the ones who are out and about on a, around the clock basis. The code enforcement office has also been trained in the use of the meters and can be part of that. I want to also mention that this ordinance responding to comments from council makes more specific provision about how to go about measuring background noise and ambient noise and defines those terms, makes provision for how you go about handling that when, when what you're measuring is mixed in with whatever's going on in the background, all to try to make that more enforceable. It, I probably skipped it, but it adds a section on production blasting noise, which is the DEP's standard built in. And finally, and I think maybe as important as anything in terms of the enforceability of the ordinance, it adds a section on measurement procedures. Again, it's not a trivial thing, you've got to hold these meters at a certain height, there's got to be certain recommended distance from the source of noise, there's has to be wind screens, the meters come with some built-in technology to, to account for some of these things. You can't just go out there and take a shot and end up having that enforceable in the courts. So, we've added measurement procedures which mimic DEP's procedures. So, that's it. We had great help from Warren Brown of Enrad Inc. up in Old Town, who's longtime noise consultant to DEP and others, and from Tom Russell, who has reviewed these and made his comments, and as you already had at the time of public hearing. So, I think this is set to go from staff's point of view, set for adoption.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Evan?
Well, I'd, I'd like to see some kind of outreach to the public, so the public understands what we can do with these meters and what we can't do. I think there'll be a lot of misperceptions about what, what the meters mean and what you can do with them, and I think it would be a good idea if we put together a document of frequently asked questions or some, something along that order pertaining to things that the public might not understand about the meters and what you can and can't do with them.
Yep.
Just kind of preemptively prepare that and.
Yeah, and they're pretty, they're pretty good, this is good equipment, they can do a lot, but there are some things they can't do.
Jeff, I can't even understand the definitions.
Of what?
Well, tonal sound. Can you, can you, can you read the definition of tonal sound?
Tonal sound or total sound?
Ton, T-O-N-A-L sound. It's one whole sentence, too, it goes on forever.
What page?
Yeah, it's on page sixty-one and one, in this one, and on the new, the new section that we got.
Page three.
It'll be on page three.
Yeah.
Page three. On ton, tonal sound.
Page sixty-one?
Well, depending where you're looking.
The handout you got today.
On the new handout, it's right on page three.
Here you go.
There's no question that these are, these are technical, this definition comes straight from DEP, so we borrowed and made them consistent.
The average person, I mean, I.
Right, so we need to explain it.
Exactly.
I mean, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, sound is, is measured in hertz and it's, and they're often divided into different bands, and those different man, bands have different qualities of noise or sound, and, and, you know, that one-third octave band above and below means that I don't want to have to imitate the noise. So, it's that, it's that high squeal, that high squeal is, and is in a different band than normal noise, and if that noise, what it's saying is that noise exceeds the average of, you know, three bands together, bands either side of it by a certain amount, then it's tonal. It had, it had, it produces that higher, for example, high squealing quality that is annoying. It just quantifies what that means. But we can, you know, we should probably have a little web thing on our page about this.
Are there possible examples of what would cause that, or certain, would this be like machinery operation?
And a broken fan belt is a good example.
Excuse me, on an ongoing basis kind of thing?
Yes, or, I mean, it could be, I don't know, it could be in a neighbor's garage, you know, something running all the time, and it's got a broken fan belt, and it's got a high squeal to it, and it's annoying people. So, I mean, but normally, normally a lot of this stuff is associated with industry. We don't have much of that industry at this point, less.
Wind turbines and stuff, you hear a lot about that causing noises.
Yes, and that, that's another form of tonal sound, you know, very low frequency stuff. But yes, we can get examples.
DEP might have it already.
I think they may, and Warren Brown has a presentation that he might be willing to, to share with us and allow us to put on the site.
Okay.
So, it's a good case in point for, I guess, for my comment, then, is that, you know, I agree with Judy, I mean, if you, if you try to read that, you're not, most, most people are not going to understand what that means, but you have to have it that way in the ordinance because if you go to court, that's what you have to have. So, so we needed something that interprets this and.
That point we'll take in, and we will do that.
Yeah.
So, Evan, on the background, where the background noise, so this is on page seven.
Mm-hmm.
It says where the background noise is determined to be the same as or higher than the maximums listed above. Do we have any place in the community in which background noises currently are in violation of our?
Not, not that I know. It would certainly be probably, probably along I-95. Some of the heavily traffic interchanges, maybe some places along Stillwater Avenue. I mean, traffic is a major generator of noise, and it may be producing background noise that exceeds these.
What about trains?
Trains would be another one, yes, it's, it's temporary and, but it's, but yes, that's a good point, that's a good example.
Tire noise on a wet road will be beyond any, any normal.
Yeah.
Sound ordinance limits.
In terms of industrial activity, probably not, but there's a lot of noise things that happen outside of that, and traffic is probably the primary.
Yeah, and we're prohibited by state law from regulating noise from moving traffic on state roads and highways, so.
But are we going to start? Are we going to start fining people for having a wet fan belt or something that's squealing? Is that where we're heading with this, or?
No, it wouldn't be fining, it might be could, I mean, if there was, if there was a fan belt that was annoying and, and a measurement went out and got, got taken and they were exceeding the levels, then they'd be asked to repair the fan belts and stop making that noise.
The only way that any of this is going to get enforced is if somebody from the public comes forward and complains about something.
Well, I don't think anyone's necessarily going to look at this and say, oh, well, let's see if we can find something, it's just, well, they're being bugged by noise, at least we have something written here that can.
You've got, you've got something to go, and you can enforce something if, if.
I would assume the majority of these will be, the noise complaints we get are based on public nuisance, anyway.
I would think that that is correct.
Yeah.
We've had a few others that I'm aware of, and there could be certainly some industrial activity in the future that would invoke this.
So, are, what's the minimum time for a measurement? I mean, it's not, as you said, an instant measurement.
It's an hour, we're using, we use hourly average. So, it might get said, you know, every six seconds or every ten seconds or something like that, and you get an hourly average.
And another thing that means is that if, if there's a loud party in your neighborhood and you complain to the police, they're not going to come out and measure the noise from the party with their sound meters. That's, yeah, and that's the kind of thing that, that I think we need to explain to people that, yeah, we've spent money on this equipment, but if you have a loud party, that's not the time to use the equipment, so.
Correct.
But people aren't going to understand that, so. Need to educate them, I think.
And Evan, one last question. This would be incorporated in a planning permitting process now?
It already is. Site plan review and subdivision, but primarily site plan review requires a finding by the planning board that the noise ordinance has been complied with, so that if there were a industrial activity or a mineral extraction activity or something like that came before the board of site plan review, there would need to be documentation that the steps have been taken to mitigate whatever potential noise was so that they met these standards at the boundary lines.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yep, so.
The only comment I have is, you have a very kind of brief ordinance revision here. Evan has worked incredibly hard on this, and he's, I think, gone well above and beyond what anybody could have reasonably expected.
Absolutely.
He's hoping you never have to use it.
Yeah.
Better to have it and not use it than not have it and what you did.
Yes. Public, go ahead.
Thank you, Evan.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Evan.
I recall the first mentioning of this project, so I am familiar with it, some, there's mentioning of the meters, and I'm trying to visualize what type of meters you're speaking of, are there going to be meters installed throughout the town, or are these portable meters?
Handheld meters that aren't much bigger than this, and they have a microfocal sensor up here, it's got the proper windshield and all the digital displays and buttons here, and you mount it on a tripod to be the right height and be steady and all that stuff, out of the wind and so forth.
It's very labor intensive.
It is, yes. Somebody's got to be monitored, and you wouldn't want to leave that in the woods someplace and all by itself.
Thank you.
No, you wouldn't want to do that.
All right, and I, I also just wanted to explain, the reason we're replacing and repealing it is because there was so many small changes throughout the, each paragraph, that it would just be very costly to have the code person printer go through all that, so we're just replacing the whole thing. I will take a vote on order fifteen sixty-eight. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Evan. Order fifteen sixty-nine, order confirming the town of Orno's active participation in the main broadband coalition. I will take a motion, please.
So, move.
Second, please.
Second.
All right. Toby, is this you?
This would be Bell, but again, she's in the back room, so the Old Town Orno Fiber Corporation has, one of its first items of business is going to be to officially join the broadband coal, main broadband coalition. This is a group of municipalities and industry that are really pushing the rollout of ultra-high-speed fiber across the state, and something that we think is important for the town of Orno, given our municipal focus on it to be part of. This is not a, we don't pay anything to be part of this coalition, and I've given you the listing of the membership to date. You'll notice it's economic development groups, it's municipalities, nonprofits, and for-profits all working together to try to educate our legislators about the need for high-speed fiber.
Any questions or comments? So, is, this is basically for legislative purposes, not grant purposes at all, or?
It, it talks about, they want to create fact-based information to help public policymakers and the citizens.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Cindy?
Yeah.
Some gentleman wants to speak about the issue, I think.
Just walk.
Yeah, you need to come to the microphone.
Thanks.
So he can get recorded.
My name's Don Moore, I live on Old Kelly Avenue. I was just wondering if citizens would have access to that broadband?
Absolutely, that's what it's for.
I mean, it'd be run up Old Kelly Avenue.
Well, we're going to run it everywhere that we can, and the growth area is what we're targeting.
Thank you.
It costs a lot of money, though, so we're not going to get everywhere right away, so.
But is it, you're saying the growth area, Jeff, and Old Kelly Avenue is not in the growth area, or is it?
Our designated growth area, whatever, I don't know what the boundaries are.
They are, that would be?
Kelly, most of Kelly.
Out of Forest Avenue is not in that designated growth area, is it?
I don't, I don't know what the boundaries are.
Yeah.
I think it's, is it in Stillwater, what, East?
Stillwater East. There can be argument that we could make that would bring it up to the town line in VZ, but most definitely Old Kelly would be part of the growth area.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll take a vote on Order 1569. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to future agenda items and items of concern. I'll start with Sam. Nothing? Mark?
Just because we were talking about maintenance and Rob's still here. So, I've had a number of people talk to me over the last few years about exuberant youth taking stones at the boat launch at Brownies and toss them into the river, toss them onto the ice. So, what do you have to do, Rob, to keep that maintained? No, do we have to replace the stones there? I mean, because, I mean, it was all built thinking that the big stones you put in place were not going to get pitched into the river.
Exuberant youth, huh?
Rob York's the Public Works Director. The stones were chosen, their size were chosen for erosion control because that was really, the whole impetus for the hand-carry boat launch was to address a pretty serious erosion problem at that point where people were dragging their boats down over the bank. So, we provided a spot for that to happen. And the stones are there to stabilize the bank. We do have to refresh them every couple of years, and that's, one of the reasons is that people are throwing them out there, but... I don't know, I'm a Public Works Director. I know the stones work for erosion control, but, I mean, the rocks maybe could be a little bigger, but we don't really have a, a good source for that. And then, the bigger they are, the more likely that the water's going to work down in between them. The, the size of stone we use is kind of the right mix for that, but...
But doesn't sound like it's to undo a burden to keep...
No, no. Every, every couple of years, we have to bring some down there. And it's only, it's only been there for three or four years now, so. We did it last year.
Thank you, Rob.
I'm all set.
Tom, so? Jeff?
Yeah, I, my neighbors are asking me about the status of the property on Island Avenue that the town owns or doesn't own, or might own, or, I think it's number 34.
Oh, I, I know just the one.
Yeah, I knew you knew the number.
I'm still trying to work through that. I will be honest, I've kind of put that on the back burner as I try to get the budget out.
All right, okay. That's the only thing I had.
Okay.
Believe it or not. Other, the condition of the roads around town, but that's just, we just need a lot of money.
Yeah.
So...
Tom?
Well, I'm not going to complain about the frost eaves, they're starting to go away. So, I, I really have nothing else to talk about.
Judy?
I'm fine.
All right. Get off. Nope, good. Public petitions, I don't think we have any. Public comments? Susan?
I have a personal announcement to make, that I'm actually thrilled to make. As we approach the upcoming summer and athletic season, it occurred to me, this is my 20th year of cycling, of street road cycling. I started street road cycling as a messenger in Boston in 1995, in between semesters of academics. And so, since I'm bringing up the topic of cycling, I mean, it's what promotes cycling as a transportation alternative. I think it's a great way to get around a town. I think this vicinity has excellent cycling terrain. It's very communicable, commutable via bicycle. When I was a resident to the larger cities, Boston, I would leave the same location as a person transporting themselves in a car to the same destination, and typically, I arrived first. It's for every, you know, I'd, I'd say, starting to ride a bike is a little challenging and can be exhausting, but it only gets easier with each ride. And my last comment about cycling also, you know, I've become more and more satisfied with myself and cycling as I've been seeing recent reports, recent urgent reports pertaining to environmental concerns such as numerous ice formations are experiencing very rapid meltings due to pollution output. A lot of those pollutions are landing on various ice caps, which is making those formations melt faster, which has been very concerning to environmentalists pertaining to the elevation of water levels as well as the depletion of drinking water and such. So, if one is able-bodied, has the energy to ride a bike, join me on the road.
Great, thank you very much, Susan, and congratulations. All right. Now, I'd like to take a motion for executive session. There will be no more town business. And I could get a motion, please?
So, move.
Second, please?
Second.
You have to read the purpose, I think.
Yep, so, all those in favor of an executive session for MSRS Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, 6A, Town Manager's Annual Performance Review? Any, I'll take a vote, all those in favor? Moving to executive session. Thank you very much.
So, we're going to watch doors, and we will... Nancy's going to bring us time, I guess.
Cindy, did you report on the water district search? Did you go to the meeting?
Yeah, I was discussing that in that executive session.